Do any members of council wish to make any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, can I have a mover and second for motion to approve the agenda as circulated? Counselor. Counselor McDonald. All in favor? All hands are rising, motion is carried. Okay, are there any declarations of interest to disclose? Seeing none, okay, we have Kristin Spittle from Dunwood or BDO Dunwood. Here to present the 2020 financial audit, please note if if we do go into discussion regarding the management letter, we will have to go into closed session. Go ahead.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to walk you through the financial statements that were circulated to you in advance of the meeting tonight. I'm glad to be here actually to meet everybody in person. This is my first year that's as the engagement partner on the township of Red Rock. You're probably used to Walter Flaza coming down here and presenting the financial statements, but he's happily retired these days and informed me he got in eighty-five rounds of golf this summer, so. So with that being said, maybe my first plan here is just to walk through the financial statements and like you mentioned, if there's any comments on the management letter, we can do an in-camera session at the end. All right, okay. So if we start on pages three here, I'm going to jump to the independent auditor's report. So that covers pages three, four, and five. All right, so maybe I'll just go into a little bit more detail this year since it is kind of my first year walking through the financial statements and just kind of go through this in a little bit of detail and stop me and ask any questions if you're unsure what I'm kind of talking about as we walk through here. So these three pages are really the three pages that BDO is putting in these financial statements and it's just giving our opinion on the audited financial statements. So probably the most important paragraphs here are in page three at the very front there. So it does talk about the fact that we have a qualified opinion and I'll talk about that qualification here in a little bit. So we do have one qualification, but other than that, the financial statements are presented in all material respects in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. So when I'm walking through these financial statements, we're following these public sector accounting standards, which are probably much different than what you're used to seeing with budget presentations. So keep that in mind as we're going through some of these numbers as well and I'll try to tie it back to maybe a little bit of what your budget numbers would kind of usually be tied into. So with that being said, maybe I'll just chat here a little bit about the qualified opinion that we have issued and this qualification has been in the financial statements for numerous years. You know, well before I was involved in many years since Walter's been doing these financial statements and it's relating to the closure and post-closure costs of the landfill liability. So technically, under PSAB standards, you're supposed to get an engineering report done up by a local firm. It kind of outlines some key concepts like what the cost would be to close the landfill site, what the post-closure costs would be, what the capacity is that remains, and you use some calculations there to come up with a liability that would be normally included in these financial statements. So since that has never been done, that liability is not included in these financial statements. So technically, it's not in accordance with Public Sector Accounting Standards. So that's what the qualification here is regarding. Most, I would say handful of municipalities do have this qualification because they've never gone through the process. So you're not alone in that aspect, but there's still, I would say, majority of townships and municipalities do end up getting these studies done and include that liability in the financial statements. So I don't know, is there any comments or questions on that qualification piece? Maybe just pose that to counsel? That makes sense? Yeah, all right, perfect. Okay. So other than that one piece, the financial statements are in accordance with Public Sector Accounting Standards. So that's really what page three is trying to get at. Page four goes into a little bit of detail here about the responsibilities of all the parties involved. So it talks about the responsibilities of management first. So that would be the day-to-day record-keeping, designing internal controls to safeguard assets, those type of things is done by management. It also mentions those charged with governance, which would be counsel here. So you do have a, you know, a role in this to play in overseeing the financial reporting process and that's why we're here today. If you have any questions on the financial statements, myself or management would be more than happy to answer, right? And then the midway point of page number four and then all the way into page number five just goes through the auditor's responsibility. So if you were curious, you know what everyone's responsibilities are, it's clearly outlined here in this report. So the auditor's responsibilities is to assess any risks of material statements to these financial statements, make sure the financial statements are in accordance with the accounting standards, look at internal controls in the finance department, and that's why we've issued a management letter. So all of that's kind of outlined here in the body of this report. And the bottom of page five, we will, I guess if the statements do get approved today, we'll have them dated today's date at the end of all of this. All right, so maybe moving on to some of the numbers here. If we start on page number six, this is the consolidated statement of financial position. So this lists all the assets and liabilities of the township at a snapshot in time. So this is just looking at assets and liabilities at December 31st, 2020, and then the comparative period for 2019. So you'll probably hear me say this a couple of times. There's some trends throughout here. You'll see some of the numbers do fluctuate, but you did have a large capital project with the wastewater plant this year. So a lot of my comments here are going to kind of tie back to that. So bear with me when I kind of repeat myself a little bit here. But if we just start off on the financial asset piece at the very top, this is where your liquid assets would be shown. So cash in the all the bank accounts at the end of December 31st, 2020, we're a little over 1.6 million, which was up about 341,000 from the previous year. Taxes receivable would be about 551,158. Pretty similar year-over-year, down a little bit, down about 20,000 or so, a little bit due to the mill issue that's been going on. So the values there are down a little for that perspective. Accounts and grants receivable, that's 2,162,000, which is down quite a bit. If you look at 2019 numbers, that just ties into the timing of mainly the capital project for the wastewater treatment plant. So last year, there was a larger receivable that was owing at the end of this year. This year, there was a receivable of about 1.2 million for the wastewater treatment plant and 800,000 in HST that kind of related to that. So that's mainly what's included in the accounts and grants receivable, just the timing of when all the funding actually comes in the door. User charges receivable, that's sitting there at about 30,000. That would be water and sewer fees that's owing by residents. So that's pretty comparable year-over-year. So we've got total financial assets there, 4,343,728. And then down below is liabilities. So we've got some different categories here of liabilities. The first one being here, bank indebtedness. So that would be the line of credit that was used to help with some of the bridge financing there for the wastewater treatment plant. So that sat at about 290,000 at the end of the year. Accounts payable and accrued liabilities is almost 2,1962 that's sitting there. Once again, due to the wastewater treatment plant, the trade payables themselves, so your normal day-to-day trade payables was pretty much bang on from the previous year. It's just the timing fluctuations of the wastewater treatment plant payments that were going out. The vested sick leave, what that represent, that's just an estimate of the sick leave payout for when union employees retire. So that's just an estimate that's based on, you know, how many more years till they retire. We present value that and come up with an estimated liability there of about 68,000. That's right, yeah. And it's an estimate. It's based on, you know, we estimate all maybe about 65 is the average retirement age and we, you know, how many years out is everybody and we kind of do a roundabout calculation to get to that number. It's an approximate cost, yep. All right, deferred revenue that's sitting there at 340,569. You go to note number four, which is on page 15 of these financial statements. This note just gives a little bit more information. It just shows what the deferred revenue balance is made of and mainly it's the federal gas tax. So every year, there's a piece that's allocated to federal gas tax and there was no expenses this year for that type of funding. So it just continued to grow in the pot of money as well as any interest that was earned on that bank account. So that's sitting there at 315,493 that you have set aside for future expenses that qualify to be used by the federal gas tax program. And then the category that's called other, that would be some monies that have been set aside or donations for various committees. So whether it be the welcoming committee, the summer fund committee, soccer, beautification, all of that is sitting in there. So that'll be recognized as revenue when those expenses are actually incurred. So that's what's sitting in the deferred revenue balance. So if we jump back to page number six, the next item here would be long-term debt. So that's sitting at 401,800 approximately. Note five gives you a little bit more detail. So if you skip back to page 15, sorry, I'll probably make you skip back a few more times. This just breaks out the two different pieces of long-term debt there with Ontario Infrastructure. So the first one there is 350,500 that's still owing on the first adventure. I think it was originally for 500,000. It was back in 2013. And then the second one there that's sitting there at 50,353 was originally 80,000 and that was for all the LED street lighting project that was done. So no new debt this year, just the repayment. So you'll see the drop there year-over-year. So if we skip back to page number six, that rounds up the liabilities there. So there's, we add up all the liabilities. You see there's 3,62,000 and change that's sitting there in liabilities, which gives us net financial assets of 1,281,000. So that'd be your financial assets less your financial liabilities. So you're in the positive in that category. And then the last two items that are there are classified as non-financial assets. So that would be any of the assets that are harder to turn over to cash. So mainly your tangible capital assets. That's the biggest item by far that's on this statement of financial position. And you'll see that that has grown obviously from 2019. Total expenditures for capital projects in 2020 were a little over 6.9 million with the majority of that being the wastewater treatment plant and about 150,000 of other expenses. I think there was some work that was done on the bridge, some roof repairs and things like that in 2020. Prepaid expenses and inventories of supplies, that's 60,030. That's mainly gas and diesel that's been on hand, whether in the public works or down at the marina. So all in all, if we add all this up, you have an accumulated surplus there of 29,990,618. So that kind of is a summary of the statement of financial position. So any questions or comments on this page before we skip to the next one? Nope, okay. Okay, so page number seven is the consolidated statement of operations and accumulated surplus. So this page here highlights all the revenues and expenses for the year. So it starts off at the top. I guess the only difference here on this page is there's a budget category. So you can kind of can see where your actual ended up in comparison to the budget as well as the previous year's actual results. So if we kind of walk through here and just kind of go line by line, we have the revenue up at the top and we kind of start with taxation. So we have it broken up into three different categories. We've got residential and farm taxation, which is by far the largest piece here in the financial statements of revenue. And then we've got commercial and industrial taxation and you'll see that that's a fairly large decrease there when you look at 2019. So that's mainly due to the mill properties that were given back to the township of Red Rock. So obviously, there wasn't any taxation that was generated on those particular properties. So that accounts for the difference there. And then we've got taxation from other governments that's sitting there at 69,000. In addition to taxation, we've got some user charges. So we've got water and sewer billings that worked out to be about 315,255. And then we have other fees and service charges which have taken a substantial hit in 2020. Obviously, COVID was in place, so we have less building rent. Most of the facilities were closed and marina was closed. So that really obviously impacted those revenue numbers in 2020. We have government grants split out in two different categories here. We've got federal and provincial. Maybe it might just be easier if we jump to note eight because it gives a better breakdown. So note eight is on page 22, yep. So here you can kind of see the federal transfers broken down as well as the provincial transfers. So by far, the biggest federal transfer here was Infrastructure Canada, which was a piece of funding for the wastewater treatment plant that was a little over 2.2 million and a little bit of funding from Employment and Social Development Canada of about 19,000 there. You can see, as I mentioned before, there was no revenue that was recognized in regards to the federal gas tax this year on the federal side. Down below is all the provincial transfers. So we have your Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund that's sitting there at 637,500. The amount seems to get less and less and less every year from OMPF. So I've seen that with all of my various municipalities. The next one here is Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs, as well as the next line added here, the Ministry of Infrastructure. That all once again ties into funding that was received for the water treatment plant. 57,200 from municipal affairs. That was some COVID restart funding. And we've got some Northern Ontario Heritage funding to round this up of a little, almost 8,000, which would have been some intern fees is there. And then other category was about 10,800 approximately, which included some grants for the library, some seniors grant funding and things like that, some various catchalls that are smaller amounts that we just kind of group in that other category. So that worked out to be, I guess, total both the federal and provincial. There was 7,598,774 in federal and provincial transfers. All right, so sorry, skipping back to page seven again. Just continuing down the revenue line here. So permits, licenses, and fines here, that is a fairly large drop. I know you guys weren't charging a lot of interest during COVID, so that plays a part here as well. Interest income, so this would be any monies that would be earned on any of the bank accounts. That's sitting there at about 17,300 approximately. And some tangible capital assets were disposed of during the year, so a small loss there of 2,400. So all in all, your revenues are sitting there at a little over 9.5 million. And then down below, sorry, yep. That would be on the other fees and service charges. Yeah, no, that's a good question. I am not 100% sure what all was grouped in that category. I don't have the budget number in front of me. I can double-check that and get back to you tomorrow sometime. Send an email and send it to Mark and he can distribute accordingly. All right, any other questions on the revenue line? All right, okay. On the expenses side, we have this broken down by segment. So just all the different segments that the township kind of runs here. So general government would include obviously general government council expenses, things like that. That's coming in at about 867,652. When you look at 2019, that's a considerable drop. And what's flowing through there the last year is last year in the financial statements, about 600,000 was written off for the mill properties as uncollectible. So that was flowing through last year's numbers that wasn't necessarily flowing through 2020 because all of that mill stuff had been written off primarily in the previous year. The drop is about 450, so that was offset by some legal fees obviously for the mill properties as well as some payouts and things like that. So that's where you're looking year-over-year and wondering what the big differences. The main difference is last year was the mill property write-offs. Protections to persons and property, 276,983. So that would be police and fire expenses mainly. Transportation services, which is public works, was in about 821,499. Environmental services would be water and sewage. So that was sitting at 439,104. When you compare those year-over-year to the previous year, there's kind of swings in both ways. One goes up, one goes down. There was a shifting of two individuals that used to be in the water treatment plant. They got moved up into the public works department just the way that they got classified. So that's why there's kind of a swing in both of those line items. If you add them both up, it's a pretty small difference compared to both of those categories, but that's what the swing is there. Health services, 51,349. That's the payment that goes to the health unit. Social and family services, that would be the part that goes to Thunder Bay DSA for 43,555. Recreation and cultural services is sitting there at 560,761. Main reason for the drop, the marina was closed. So a lot of that flows through that category there. With the marina being closed and just all that, that's flowing through there. So obviously, there was wages that were down and things like that. Yep. Planning and development, 81,911, just due to projects that are on the go. I think last year, there was a marina project that obviously wasn't here in 2020. So it depends on what projects are being run at any given time. So all of that there totals 3,142,814. If we take the revenues less the expenses, we're left with a surplus there of 6,360,000 approximately. But I just want to kind of highlight, this is PSAB statements, right? So when you're looking at this from your budgeting perspective, really, you have to factor in things like capital asset purchases that don't show up in these expense items and things like your long-term debt payments that doesn't show up in this statement. So you take this surplus here and we subtract off the capital assets and we subtract off the long-term debt payments, we're actually in a small loss of the year of about 13,000 approximately. So in the grand scheme of things with COVID, that's probably not a horrible number by any means. So but I just wanted to kind of highlight to, when you're looking at these compared to, you know, the internal statements that you're probably seeing, it's a bit different, right? So just wanted to highlight that. Any questions on page number seven?
No, but thank you for explaining.
Yeah.
That's great.
Okay, so these are the main set of statements here. I can quickly, I'm not going to go through page number eight, but page number nine, maybe I'll quickly walk through too. This is the last main set of statements here before we get into all the note disclosures. So the statement of cash flow is really just a banker's statement, right? So this is kind of, what it does here is it starts with that surplus number that we talked about, that's 6,359, and it works its way down to what's in the bank account. So it kind of just shows you the ins and the outs of the cash throughout the year. So this is what it's trying to show. So like I mentioned, it starts off with your surplus. It adds back things that aren't real cash expenses. So every year, we set up amortization. So that's a non-cash item because you build roads, you do buildings and whatnot and we amortize it over its useful life. So that's what amortization is. So, you know, a building could be amortized over 20 years or 40 years, roads, same kind of idea. So this is a non-cash outlay. So that's why we're adding that back to the cash balance. And then we've got all the changes in non-cash operating balances. So for example, I'm not going to walk through, but there's a couple of big numbers here, accounts receivable. So last year, there was a big accounts receivable that was owing. It was paid and there's a lesser amount this year. So it's a cash inflow. That's kind of how that works. Same with accounts payable. The accounts payable, if it gets higher, then it's a cash outflow kind of thing. So that's what that's trying to kind of show here. The big items that I just kind of want to highlight is this is where you can see your acquisition of tangible capital assets. That's 6,893,912. That was what was actually outlaid for the purchase of all the capital projects. And then down below in financing transactions, you can see that you paid off the line of credit there using 387,000 in cash and then about 30,000 there to repay the long-term debt. So if you add all of that up, you actually had an increase in the bank account there of 341,515. So just a banker's statement, just trying to show you ins and outs of the cash. Yep. It's the difference year-over-year. So if you go back to, you went back to page number six, flip backwards. So see last year's bank indebtedness was 677,224, this year 289. It's the difference between the two amounts year-over-year. It works out to that 387. So it's just the amount that was repaid back during the year. Make sense? Hopefully, no. Well, last year's balance, right? So you had last year's balance that was sitting there and then you had to repay some of that back to get to the lower balance. So it's just the cash that was outlaid during the year. Okay. All right, so those are the main statements that I kind of wanted to go through. Pages 10, 11, 12, 13, I'm not going to read through. Those are the significant accounting policies. There are required disclosures that are under Public Sector Accounting Standards. They've been the same for many, many years. So there's nothing really to highlight you there. I've been through some of the notes already, so maybe I'll just touch on the ones maybe that I didn't go through that I think might be of importance. So since we're talking about the line of credits here, note number two just talks about cash and bank indebtedness. So it talks about the credit facilities. That's on page number 14, note number two. Yep, this just gives you a little bit more information about the credit facility. So the first paragraph just talks about the interest that's earned on the bank accounts, which is, you know, very minimal amount, either zero or almost not even 1%. So that's just a disclosure that's there. It talks about the overdraft protection on the main bank account that's sitting there at 300,000. None of that was used at the end of December 2020. And then on the very last paragraph, talks about the credit facility for the 1.7 million line of credit for the purpose of providing that bridge financing for the water plant here. So that's, I guess, will, I guess, change. I hear that maybe you still will be having that 1.7 million dollar line of credit. So we might have to reword this note next year, but that was what the original purpose was for that line of credit. So that's what's disclosed here. Note number three just talks about that vested sick leave liability. So the sick days just gives you a little bit of information here on how we kind of came up with the estimate. Page 15, we've already went through with deferred revenue in the long-term debt. Page 16, I guess, for the long-term debt, it kind of just gives you the principal repayments that are due over the next five years. So if you were curious of what the commitment is to repay the long-term debt, it's split out at the top chart here on page number 16. It also shows the principal payments on the second chart as well as what the interest payments were. So there was a total outlay cost there of 44,000 to repay the debt this year. Page 17 and 18, I guess 19 and 20, this is a chart here that just follows the tangible capital assets. So we have different columns for each of the main capital assets and you kind of just as a schedule that walks you through what the original cost was at the beginning of the year, plus all of the additions, less any disposals. Just kind of a running category here. I'm not going to go through in detail, but the big piece was, as I mentioned, and you can see on page number 18 there, you can see that the total additions for the year, like I mentioned, was 6,893,000 approximately. And this just works down to what the total net book value would be of everything. So I don't want to spend too much time getting bogged down in that, but that's just a chart there if anybody was interested to see all the different categories. Page number 21. This is the accumulated surplus page that kind of breaks down all of your reserve funds. So when you guys, you know, allocate monies to and from different reserves, this is kind of the summary at the end of December 31st, 2020. So it has all your reserve funds listed, kind of just showing the imbalance here. So reserve funds is having to do with setting monies aside for a certain project, right? Amortization is when you have your roads and your bridges and your buildings and you originally buy that for, let's say, a million dollars, right? And amortization is, is we say, okay, you bought our, you built all these facilities, they're going to last, you know, let's say they're going to last, I don't know, 50 years. now fifty years. We amortize that original cost at a million over fifty years and we amortize it. Um, that's what the amortization number is, so it's just, you know, that portion for that year of what we're writing off of the capital assets. Exactly, yeah, so if you never bought or never fixed anything ever again, at the end of fifty years, your number would be zero. Well, amortization has to do with capital assets, right? The reserve funds has to do with setting your money aside for for certain projects, and maybe some of them are for capital projects, but it could be for anything. It could be um, like you have, you have a whole bunch of reserve funds or you have working capital, you've got um, employee benefit costs, you've got the recreation capital fund, so it's just pots of money that's kind of been allocated to these specific purposes. So kind of two maybe separate areas almost. Yep. Okay, uh, page twenty-two. We went through the government transfers notes, so I'll skip onto that. Note number nine, so remember, this just provides expenses by object. So on the previous, when I was going through the statement of operations, we did it by segment. So whether it was, you know, via protection or public works or um, environmental, this is by objects. So this shows your salaries lines, your materials, um, your contributions to various boards. So it's just shown in a different manner. This three million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, eight fourteen ties into that expense line that we already went through. Just a different way of showing everything if you were curious, um, just to see, you know, if you wanted to see what the wages were for the year, it's it's broken down in this note for you. And this is where you'll kind of see, when I was talking about that provision for doubtful taxes receivable, I think midway down that chart here on number nine, this is where you can see the big number that flows through twenty nineteen that was there for six hundred and twenty thousand that related to the mill properties. Okay. All right, page twenty-three here, just a little bit more disclosure. Um, note number ten talks about employee benefit, um, so mainly the Omer's plan. So it talks about the Omer's plan in great detail, and then the probably the the most important piece, I guess, here would be the very last sentence that says, um, the employee and employer portions for twenty twenty were a hundred and thirty-two thousand. So if you were curious what the Omer's piece was for all of the the staff of the township, that's where we kind of split that out in note number ten. Talks about the policing contract and note number eleven. Note number twelve talks about contingent liabilities, so and and it has in every municipality, there's always ongoing cases, so we always just have a general generic contingent liability note because you don't ever know how any legal proceedings will play out, so it's just a generic note that's sitting there. Uh, note thirteen kind of just reconciles uh, your budget to what we have on the statement of operation because you you budgeted for a a break-even budget that in twenty twenty, and it just kind of walks through the P SAB changes. So that's what this note is trying to do, and it ties into the statement of operations, that fifteen thousand and ten dollars. If you went back to page number, um, I guess, page number seven ties into that. Note fourteen, um, ever since COVID hit back in March, we've had to add a note to the financial statements just saying how every entity has been impacted by COVID. For some, it's an easier discussion than others, and sometimes there's no impact, sometimes there's lots of impacts. So we've included this discussion here just for for the financial statement users. Um, probably, you know, the main piece here would be that there was no interest and penalties charged um, throughout certain months of the year and that there was some additional funding that was received from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs for that restart funding. So that's just what this is trying to. Yeah, I believe the way that the federal restart funding was, it was a pot of money that was assigned and they they kind of said this is, you had to use it for for some purpose, whether you're right, whether it's for buying masks or sanitation supplies or, you know, maybe having to hire some additional employees if that was the case for certain events, who knows, whatever the case may be, as long as it met the guidelines, then you were, you could qualify for the funding and record it as revenue, so. Yep. I'm not entirely too sure, I I don't know, Mark, if you could comment on that. I don't know how the the application process worked, I don't know how it was, if it was divvied up based on size or if it was a certain application you had to put, I'm not even too sure if you know. Yeah, I'm not too sure either.
Yep, I don't, uh, Cam, I don't believe the municipalities were aware of how much they were getting, they were just a lot of this certain amount of money. There was no formula provided at that time.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not too sure, I I got the confirmation back and I tie it in, I I didn't, I don't know how it was a divvy up in the first place. Um, page twenty-five, I guess, just continuing through the last of these notes here is just a subsequent event note. So this would be your Aqua Plan that you entered into here. So this was the the contract that was signed, I was there, has there been any subsequent updates to this? I know you had a presentation, I think, recently with Aqua, has there? Okay. So as of today's date, these numbers are still accurate though. Okay, all right, so this is just kind of showing what the commitment is on that contract that was originally signed. Um, so it's based on that agreement that's showing here. All right, and those those are the main notes. Note number sixteen talks about segmented information, which was, remember, I was talking about general government protection transit transportation services. It just gives you an outline of what all those segments are and what they mean. And then pages twenty-seven and twenty-eight. This is a further breakdown of the statement of operations, you get to the same revenue line items, you get to the same expenses here. It's just broken up into even more detail for you if you wanted to really dive into the numbers. So I I'm not going to go through that because it's just a reiteration of the summary numbers we already went through. And then pages twenty-nine and thirty, just to round this out, um, we just have a the schedule of water operations here on page twenty-nine. This, I think, is just some supplementary information if you were curious, you know, what's um, if it makes a profit or what any of the funds is used for, so just a little bit more breakdown here on the schedule of water operations. And then page thirty is the schedule of sewer operations, so it shows the revenues and expenses and the amortization. It's a little bit, um, I guess it's helpful, but at the same time, a little misleading to you because it doesn't have any of the tangible capital property purchases going through these schedules either, so it's kind of hard to really get a firm sense of how all the the money was spent here, especially on page thirty, right? You have the surplus of revenue or expenditures here of six point eight million, but we know that there was large capital asset purchases that took up that money, right? So. So those are the financial statements in a nutshell. I know I talked for quite a while, so if anyone wants some further clarification, just let me know. Any members of council have any questions? Seeing them, okay, we'll move on to the to the library report. Sure, sure. I wasn't sure how the library board worked. I wasn't sure if that's a separate board that you guys approved the financial statements for the library board today as well, okay? Yes, perfect, okay. That's good, I brought all the materials for that. Okay, so this one will be much quicker, I promise. So for this one, um, pages two and three would be our independent auditor's report, and I'm not going to walk you through that in detail, it's essentially the same thing that we talked about when we went through the township financial statements. Um, the only difference here, I guess, is there's no qualification. Um, the library board's financial statements are in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards, no qualification. This would be a clean audit opinion for the library board, as you're used to, it would always be clean audit opinions for this particular operation. Okay, so if we jump to page number four. This would be our statement of financial position. So once again, this is kind of a snapshot in time at the end of December with the twenty twenty figures and then the twenty nineteen figures here. So if we kind of start in the same way that we went through the last set of statements, your financial assets here, which include cash accounts receivable, um, the receivable from the township of Red Rock, Red Rock, that totals twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. So comparing that to twenty nineteen up slightly, kind of a different assortment of how the financial assets are comprised of just due to the timing, I guess, of when the last check was received from the library board from the township. This year it's sitting as a receivable, last year it was sitting in the bank account already, so just a timing difference. And then down below, we've got the financial liability, so the only financial liability that's sitting there would be the accounts payable, uh, which is two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. So just a few expenses that came in at the end of December that were paid early in January. Uh, at the very bottom, we've got the non-financial assets, so once again, tangible capital assets make up the biggest piece here. So that sat at about thirty-seven thousand and fifty-two dollars. Um, the biggest purchases for the year were just library books, things like that, nothing, nothing too dramatic. And a little bit of prepaid expenses there, so um, nothing too strange there. So if you add all that up there, we've got the accumulated surplus there of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. Much, much more simple statement of financial position compared to the last one we went through. All right, and then page number five is your statement of operations. So once again, all the revenues, all the expenses. I don't think there's anything really out of the ordinary here, um, when we go through the revenue line. You, the biggest piece here is obviously um, municipal contribution that's sitting there at ninety thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. There was some special grants this year, um, one was received from the Ministry of Seniors and Accessibility for almost four thousand and the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Sport that worked out to be three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. Um, a little bit of miscellaneous expenses that are are revenues, I should say, that are included in there for about eighteen hundred dollars and then ninety-six dollars that was um, earned on the bank account, so um, close to a hundred thousand, ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. And then we have all the ways that the money was spent listed down here below on the expense side. Uh, total expenses equal about eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-four. The biggest expense by far for the library would be salaries and benefits line there, which worked out to be fifty-eight thousand and eighty-four dollars, less than what was budgeted for COVID, right? So there was some reduced hours and some um, reduced salary costs there as well. So that's kind of the biggest item that goes through here. Um, other larger items, I guess, would be some computer supplies there, which was pretty much basically right on budget at thirty-two hundred and seventy-four dollars. And the rent piece there is twenty-five hundred dollars, which is same every year. And then we've got um, some sundry expenses that forty-four, twenty really just relates to some of the grants that were received. So that was some of the materials that were used to support some of the the grant that was received for certain programming. And I guess we've got some supplies and telephone or the the next largest items there. So all in all, obviously salaries are the biggest piece there, and at the end of the day, if you subtract the revenues from the expenses, there was a surplus on the on the library side of twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Any questions on this one? No, okay. I think that's probably all I proposed to to go through on this set of statements. Um, there's not a lot of transactions that are really going through here, it's a pretty simple standard operation. And when we did our audit, there wasn't anything that came to our attention that really stood out, so.
Any members of council have questions? Kristen, no? Hey, can I please have a mover and secondor for motion to accept the twenty-twenty consolidated financial statement for the township of Red Rock as presented? All in favor? Motion is carried. Hey, can I have a mover and a secondor for motion to accept the twenty-twenty consolidated financial statements for the library as presented? All in favor? All hands rising, motion is carried. Okay, next, uh, we have no minutes, no correspondence. Administrational bylaws, new business, so next on the agenda is closed session portion of the meeting. Do any members of council wish to go into closed session? Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is a closed session portion of the meeting, may I have a mover and secondor to go into closed session for personal matters about identify identifiable individual? Councilor Mayor, Councilor McDonald. All in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, uh, council to go into closed session at five forty-six. Okay. Okay, report from closed session, we went over management, uh, management letter from VDO, uh, checks and balances that municipality will be working on to improve uh, the financial audit. Confirming by law, the next bylaw is to confirm proceedings of council, may I please have a mover and secondor for motion to pass the bylaw? Councilor Mayor, Councilor McDonald. All in favor? All hands rising. Motion is carried. Now the time being six fifteen, there's no further business to attend to, uh, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone. And again, thank you and have a safe drive.